John, you ready? Mary Ann, you ready?
It's not a big deal.
Really?
But I just wanted to give you the...
Okay, we're gonna get started here, it's 5:02. We'll call this Monday, October 27th, Gallatin Municipal Planning Commission Meeting to Order. To start, Albert, do you mind saying the invocation? Okay.
Gracious wise and merciful Father, we come before your presence, we bow out here with humble hearts, as we come together again to conduct the business of the city. We ask you to watch over this meeting, we thank you for watching our community. As we stand bowed here, O Master, we're praying for those people in Humphreys Counties and other areas who have lost loved ones. Please keep them lifted up in a mighty way. We continue to watch over us, O Master, we do the things that you find pleasing in your sight. We ask it all in your son's name, Christ, amen.
John, you mind doing the pledge?
Sir, I join men in pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mary Ann, do we have a roll call?
Sir, Chair Harris. Vice Chair Moreau.
Here.
Mr. Carrier.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
President.
Councilman Fan.
Here.
Mr. Stroudler.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Secretary, we have minutes for approval?
Yes, we have minutes dated September 8th, 2025, Planning Commission Work Session Meeting, and September 29th, regular agenda meetings. And I move that we approve these without any changes.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Uh, Councilman Fan, any discussion on minutes? Have I seen none? All those in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Next, we will move to the public comment on agenda-related items. Please note that there may be a few items in the regular agenda that may have public comment, but this is an opportunity to comment on agenda-related items that do not have public comment. So, at this time, I will open a public comment on agenda-related items. And when you come forward, please state your name and address, please. Yes, sir.
My name's Joel Stanley, I'm an attorney at Beltracix Harrington in Brentwood, 327 Springs Way, Suite 110 in Brentwood, Tennessee, 37027. Represent Michelle and Pascal, they are the neighboring owners of the Kensington Down item, which is item, I believe, number 10 on the agenda? And we just wanted to address some few concerns. I understand that the final master development plan is pending today, and is item number 10, Phase 5. Back, I'll be brief, back in this time last year, a client reached out to us and raised some concerns with the proposed plan. We, the, my client met with the developer, they've ironed these plans, or these items out, and we subsequently sent a letter to City of Gallatin, care of Susan Heimacauli, the City Planning Commission care of Matt Harris, Brian Rose, the city planner, and the developer regarding these three items. One was regarding the berm. Predominantly, the berm to be constructed was for, you know, privacy and other issues. The, the exhibit, which I believe is 10-2, and it's page 121 on today's agenda, the exhibit shows that the berm, the way it's constructed, so the berm's in the middle, client's property's say to the right, the developer's property's to the left. Developer's property is, is raised above the crown of the berm, which more or less defeats the purpose of the berm. It's sloped down, in essence, that the homes that will be developed more or less look down upon the client's property, and that kind of defeats the whole purpose of any, of any privacy. I mean, again, a berm, you would think it would be more flat than slope up, and then it'd have the swale on both sides. Another issue that the clients have raised is that there's water intrusion already on the northeast portion of their property. It pools for days and it won't go away until after a week or so. And the way this is currently, currently constructed, the addition of the berm and its swale, coupled with just the row of homes for Phase 5, will only add to, purportedly would only add to more water intrusion. Just the building of homes, obviously, will take away from green space and soil to absorb and soak up that water. Now, the way what we understand is that'll more or less, you know, water, I'm not a civil engineer, water's lazy, it's gonna find the path of least resistance, it's just gonna force it through and just, it could be a river, it could be a stream on the property, we don't know. And so that's another major issue, I would say, if it, if our client's property's constantly just being soaked and barbed whenever it rains, like today. And then the last item that we have is that regarding the stub outs. We previously agreed to, the stub outs would not encroach or abut the property. There's gonna be a little, I don't want to throw out a foot, but there's gonna be some, a buffer, I guess, between the property and the stub out road. But in the comments in the agenda, it reads that, I think it read that city norms or city customs is that it touched the joint, the adjacent property. And again, those are three items that we did not agree to. We ask that, basically deny the, the final master development plan as is. You defer it to another time where we can just iron out these few final issues. They're my clients, obviously I'll advocate for them, I would be upset if I was the homeowner. Those are big-ticket items, in my opinion, I don't think that's unreasonable. And at least get a City of Gallatin engineer, just to maybe confirm, check off that there, this will not lead to water intrusion. Figure out the slope where it's not looking down, again, it just defeats the entire purpose of the berm, and then we figure out these stub outs. And I'd like to, obviously, allow my clients to speak as well, it is their home, it is their residence. But if you had any other questions, I'd be happy to field them or pawn them off to my, to my clients.
We're not allowed to speak during public comment.
Don't worry, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, I'm Michelle Juvance, and my address is 1335 Long Hollow Pike. And, yes, those are, our attorney just stated the issues that we have. I did not realize that these houses were gonna be raised up so high that the ground level was gonna be raised up four feet from the existing ground level, so it would be actually above the berm until Friday, when the agenda was posted, because it was, that page wasn't on the work session agenda. And so when I noticed that, that really kind of was shocking to me, because if you could imagine, like, back in 2017 and 2018, when the developers first met with us and said to us, hey, you know, we're gonna do this berm, we're gonna put extra plantings, you're gonna have a 25-foot buffer yard, it's gonna look really nice. And obviously, we're thinking, okay, you know, like, we don't want that development, but, you know, they're gonna try to do something nice for us and put this berm in. And so, that was when, a year ago, when the berm didn't happen at all, they tried to completely erase it, that we got lawyers involved and basically said, you know, they promised us this, it was their idea. So now, when I'm, on Friday, looking at the agenda, and I see this page that's showing especially the corner lot number, I think it was number 15, that's on the northeast corner of their property, that lot is gonna be four and a half feet above where my, my land is, basically. So, when I'm just kind of walking my dog along, and I'm gonna be walking my dog, and there's this nice three-foot berm, and I'm gonna look, and there's gonna be the bottom of the houses four and a half feet above, so basically, at my eye level, is the bottom of the house. I mean, they're bringing in tons of dirt to have to do this. So I'm like, what, this is ridiculous, what is, what is this? So you can imagine, on Friday, when I saw that page that had just been put in, thank you, City Planning Department, for requesting that page to be, like, shown to us so we could see what they were planning to do. Anyway, that was just like, I, this is not cool. Also, I do walk my dog every single day along the perimeter of my property, so I know where the water pools when it rains. And that corner right there, with, you know, on the opposite side of, you know, where that lot number 15 is, on my side of the land, that is where the water sits after it rains, because that's the lowest point. And if you look at all of the elevations on your engineering stuff there, you see that that is the lowest point. And that is where the water ponds. So, when they're putting this berm, and they have all these rooftops, and they have this house that's right there, that's raised up to like, who knows how tall it's gonna be, almost 30 feet in the air for the roof. And then they have berm, and then a swale, and the water's gonna go rushing down to that corner where it's the lowest part, and it's gonna go on to my neighbor's property and my property, and it's gonna wash away the bottom of that berm, because that's what the water's gonna do, like, that's naturally where it goes now. They're already gonna artificially raise the whole entire development up higher for the pads of the, of the houses, and the water's gonna rush down onto my property right there. So I have a big concern about that. And then about the pavement to the property line. Okay, so, when I first started coming to the meetings, and we were promised, you know, there's gonna be a buffer, and da-da-da, like, I was really naive. When you hear as a layperson, like, oh, you're gonna have a buffer, there's gonna be a 25-foot buffer from the development, you think like, oh, that's a buffer, cool. But really, it's not, like, it's really a place for them to put their utilities, and it's a place for, like, easement, for, like, all of the stuff, including a road. That is not a buffer. When you're putting a road all the way to the property line of somebody, that is not a buffer. You don't cut through a berm and cut through a buffer yard and put a road there with sidewalks so that all the people who live in this new development that's gonna get built can walk their dogs, and the kids can come with their footballs, and walk on the sidewalk straight onto this, like, big, open, mode field that I have, and, and play, like, it's just very inviting for that. And that is not why we bought a piece of property, was to provide, like, a playground for the kids in the development next to us that we had no idea would, you know, someday come there. Anyway, these are big concerns. Thank you very much for taking these into consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Oscar Juvance, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. So, for, for the story of that piece of land, if you haven't following it, what's happening now, and what's happening to the developer, it's basically their own fault. Because when we dealt with them from day one, that one and a half acre who sloped down to our property was supposed to be sold to us. And at the last minute, they changed their mind, even if we had a verbal agreement at that time, and took that one and a half acre out of the deal to be able to put the houses there, where the initial deal was making sense, because the property we have now to the one and a half acre was the top of the year. So basically now, they have to bring, like Michelle said, they're gonna have to bring tons and tons of dirt to get four feet high to be able to be level on that one and a half acre. Again, how much dirt they're gonna have to bring, it's just ridiculous. The water, you know, engineering, I sent them last week a video of what's happening in Carlton with this kind of berm. When it's raining, it's a river. It's not, you probably saw that video, I sent it to Nick, it's a river. So they have the same kind of burn they want to do there, the same kind of swell, and when it's raining, it's becoming a river, because again, Mother Nature doesn't follow the rule we have on the paper. Do, you know, like, the lawyer said, the east, the least path of resistance, where's the water gonna go? So, we're not unreasonable, we, you know, we did our best, we got promises thing, promises in written, that would have a giant berm for privacy, and now they change everything again. Like Michelle said, what the point of a three-foot berm for privacy when the land behind the berm is four feet high? That make no sense. And the staff, I would like you to, to do too, I would ask you to defer that item, so we can work on that, like we've been doing for years now, with the developer, because at the end of the day, we want to be able to work with them, and that everything was promised to us is done, and everything go fine. If you have been following the council, we're passing right now a new resolution on safety, who got brought to us by code and fire, who required that road. When there is parking on both sides of the road, will be 34 feet. So, with the ordinance we haven't got, and people can park, they're gonna be able to park on both sides of that road, who's only 25 feet. So, I would ask you to go with, ask them to rethink that and make 34 feet, so we can be current with when we're gonna pass that ordinance, who's coming on second reading soon. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public comment on agenda-related items. Okay, now, we will move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are items that staff deems are, don't need a lot of discussion. They're normally items like preliminary plots and final plots, that are pretty basic. This time, we have items 1 through 8 on the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the commission or staff wishing to remove one of these items off the consent agenda and place it on the regular agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
No, I'll go on record as recusing myself from items 4 through 8 of the consent agenda.
Okay.
It's all related to one property.
Okay. Anyone else?
You want to vent on this separately? You invite the both items 1 through 3, and then 4 through 8, since he...
I think, the way we've done it in the past, I think we can, we can vote on it, and she just notes that he recused himself on those items.
Okay.
Correct, Ben?
That's the way.
Okay, alright. Alright, so I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Mike. Second from Councilman Fan, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes unanimously. And we will move on to item number nine, Gun Hill Subdivision, 513 and 517 Nichols Lane, final plot. Jim?
Thank you, Vice Chairman Jim Carpenter, Staff Planner. The owner and applicant request approval of a final plot for Gun Hill Subdivision, creating four lots out of three parcels totaling 7.69 acres. Zoned R20, located in City Residential District, located south of Nichols Lane and east of Lot 4 Road. So, the first version of this that was at work session had this access easement here that connected to the driveway for this property on Nichols Lane. The final plot proposes basically that same access easement, but instead of both, they created Lot 3 and Lot 4 going to this house, one would be going left, plan left to this home at the corner, and the other one would be going this way. Staff has added conditions of approval, namely 6, 7, and 8, that would change this layout. Currently, this is not consistent with the subdivision regulations. And so basically, access would have to come from Lot 4 for these two lots, and then if a home were to be built on this lot, this driveway would have to go away. With the conditions of approval, staff recommends approval of Resolution of 2025-123.
Thanks, Jim. Is there a member from the applicant present?
Dakota Beasley, Greenlit Design. We have looked over these few action items here and discussed with the owner of the property. We are in agreement with all of them, but would like to discuss, I think it's 7 through 9, about the access. The owners are willing to do this with, I think that's Lot 4 up there, coming off of Lot 4 Road. But we feel a better product would be a single access off of Nichols for all four lots, if we can avoid public right-of-way or private roadage, all through easement, but we understand that's not quite an option through the regulations.
Is this something y'all have discussed with engineering? Yes?
Brian Rush in our engineering department. So there's two issues here, the first one is the subregs, it's Section 1-1130.109. In order to do a lot without frontage, it can only have one access easement across another property. That access easement has to be at least 50 feet in width. The other issue is our Gallatin On The Move. Lot 4 is a minor arterial, and Nichols is a collector, so the driveway spacing will be an issue with this. So we kind of gave them some direction. One of the ways this will work is if we remove one of the driveways on Lot 1, and then have it configured like the comments. The other issue, or the other option that they could do, would be to create a private road, which is part of that flag portion of Lot 3. And then they can feed driveways off of that and remove a driveway as necessary to meet the Gallatin On The Move driveway spacing for that.
Would, I'm assuming if the driveway on Lot 2 is being, is asked to be removed, I'm assuming that the easement or slash the private road would also be too close to the intersection?
Correct, they would have to get rid of one of the driveways as well on, I can't see, is that Lot?
Lot 2 is right at the corner.
Lot 1.
Lot 1 is...
Lot 1.
Top right.
Yeah. And then also in the mix, possibly is a plan for a roundabout at this intersection as well. So that complicates things a little bit.
Have we determined that there's enough right-of-way there for the roundabout?
Speak to that, Aaron.
So there is a developer agreement that we had with, with the banks of Lot 4 developer, and so if any right-of-way is necessary to get that roundabout in place, then it's similar to what's going on at the Hancock. The city will help on, on that behalf for, for the right-of-way, and then...
That'll be done later, not with this.
Sorry.
That will be done later, not with this.
Correct, correct, and that's, and that's why the driveway that's going closest to the intersection of Nichols Lane and Lot 4, that's why we're asking that to be removed, because we want to see the roundabout there as part of the off-site improvements for the banks project.
Yes, sir.
That was, that was gonna be, my question is, I know we don't have any details on the roundabout, well, any concrete details on the roundabout yet, but what would the driveway spacing on Nichols Lane, if they were to do a communal road, 50-foot wide road, what would the driveway spacing need to be from the beginning of the roundabout? Because I assume the roundabout is gonna consume land to the east of the current intersection, not to the west towards the creek, it's gonna kind of push it off to the east.
So Nichols is a collector, and that is 185 or 235?
Ooh.
Yeah.
What is it to the, part of the, how, how close are we to the raised return on that farthest property corner?
That I don't have the answer to tonight, I'd have to measure that.
That looks like right at, close to the 185, or...
The width of, of Lot 1 is 158.
Plus 50.
Feet, plus...
No, it's total 158.
No, yeah, it's total 158.
About 200 feet, or something like this.
Maybe 200 feet.
Okay.
It's just based off of the measurements here.
They really complicate things, trying to look at something in the future that's not to be done. Could the, could the communal road be designed to be one of the access points on the roundabout? That's like looking way too far in a crystal ball in the future.
I'm gonna jump in here with this, Dakota's presenter in training. So Andy Lee, it's 114B. I doubt we're even close if the developer of the banks is responsible for the roundabout, because there's some topography on that lot in the corner too. I don't know if we're opposed to it at all, we're actually trying to work, we feel like what we're presenting is better than having access off of Lot 4 Road. And I don't know if the engineering would disagree with us, it's just the city has their ordinances that it conflicts with. And I would like to state too, this plot in front of you is only creating one lot, because Lot 4 is a lot of record, it just doesn't have road frontage.
Hmm.
This only creates one additional lot in this little area right here.
What driveway would y'all be using as shared? The one furthest away?
The driveway on Lot 1 that's existing?
And the, and the, I guess, what Brian was saying, the issue is that Lot 4 doesn't have 50-foot of road frontage?
Lot 4 doesn't have any road frontage. So what we've turned in, it gets a little bit, not complicated, but there are easements that make every one of these lots legitimate.
Yeah.
In practice, people are gonna go the pathway of least resistance.
Yes.
So they're all gonna go over to Nichols.
Yeah.
Not over Lot 4, unless they're gonna go to the Marina Beach.
Just, just spit it on here.
What we're proposing would take away, and the owners are willing to take away the access on Lot 4, for Lot 2, or, yeah, Lot 2. But we're not gonna do it at their peril, so right now, what we've turned in, it gets them this subdivision, and we're legitimate, and we comply with the city's subregs. Just trying to think outside the box for what might be better in the long run.
Now, I know y'all mentioned that y'all could have a shared access for all four lots off of the driveway in Lot 1.
In practice, we can, but not according to the city's...
But what I'm saying is, you could utilize that as access. Can you not fit a 50, a 50-foot access easement, even though it doesn't get used on the, on Lot 2 for Lot 4?
We can do that, we can, yes, because we've already got that drawn in with the recent middle. So there is a 50-foot access on Lot 2 that, so I see, you're sort of saying, do like we do in the county?
Yes.
Put the access easements on, but build one road?
Yes.
I'm fine with that, if the city would...
I mean, you end up with an extra easement on the plot that's used for access, but absolute worst case, if they had to use it, but, I mean, then that would be an access to Lot 4. But I don't know if this, I don't know if engineering's open to that.
My, my understanding is those lots, those interior lots, 3 and 4, either have to individually have, each have to have an access, or it has to be a 50-foot built to city street standards access to be a shared common access.
Well, I mean, without convoluted it, we'll just, I mean, we're in agreement with all comments, we just wanted to try it out to see if there's something that would make it more palatable. But if not, we're in agreement with all comments.
I understand why you're getting in front of this before these big changes go into the intersection at Lot 4, it's important.
Yeah, and, and who knows when that'll happen? And right now, even if... And right now, even if we build this out the way that in accordance with the city's comments for approval, if the developers have to come to whoever owns lot two at the time, there's gonna be plenty of room to scoop that drive back and get them right of way there. I mean, obviously up to them to negotiate, but that house sits far enough back off the road, it shouldn't impede the roundabout.
Okay. So the, but the condition is only removing the driveway on Nichols?
Nichols. The way it's worded, I think it's worded that driveway comes out when a building permit's pulled on lot four.
Okay, and y'all are in agreement?
We're in agreement.
Okay, all right. I don't have any other questions. I mean, if y'all are in agreement. Any discussion or questions? Entertained a motion? I mean, outside of the, I mean, it sounds like y'all have got it somewhat figured out. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make motion to approve the staff's eleven conditions.
Okay, I'll second that. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that's opposed? Passing unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now we go to item number ten, Kensington Downs, phase five.
Can I just?
Yes.
I genuinely do not know if I have a conflict on item ten, but we've done buffers in the neighborhood, so on chance that we're associated with this one, I'll recuse myself.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Kimberly Atley, staff planner. The owner applicant requests approval for a final master development plan for Kensington Downs, phase five. It's located west of Greenlee Boulevard and north of Grandstand Boulevard. Twenty-six single family detached lots, three open space, two public right aways. It's on six point two eight-two acres, zoned R eight PRD and approximately six thousand square foot, minimum of six thousand square foot lots. There's two parking spaces in combination of the garage parking and the driveway parking, which meets the minimum. We do have the, I'm gonna skip over here to the buffer. They had, they were requested for the PMDP to have an enhanced buffer yard, including a berm. And on the PMDP, I'm trying to get to it, there it is. During this time, the FMDP shows that the canopy also along the eastern side, the eastern side is, hold on. Right there? The eastern side of the property preserves the buffer line, and this is required from the PMD approval, so they are preserving their property line there as well. They're also gonna be doing their street trees. There's gonna be, there has been ongoing discussion in regards to the stubout of the, on the north and the east side, as shown in the stubout. As you could see, this will continue the right of way to the property line, but not to the pavement in order to preserve the buffer yard. They have extra landscaping there. But during the construction process, engineering department will work with the developer to ensure that if the extension of the road ever happens, that it will, and it will be doable. So they're, they're leaving that, preserving that room. So the engineering has requested that the large oak trees in the stubout area be replaced with something smaller with the evergreen or, or shrubs. Today's discussion is on the end. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there a representative from the applicant present?
Luke Tally with CSDG. We are in agreement with all comments and happy to walk through any of the conditions. I know, like Kimberly mentioned, one of the conditions was where the roads for the stubouts need to terminate, so we're happy to do what planning and engineering want with that. That's no bother to us. We'll bring them as, as far as possible within the buffer or leave the buffer as is, as it's shown on the plan.
I guess, do you have any feedback or comments or responses to some of the comments that were shared earlier in the meeting?
Yes, I know there were a few things, so please, you know, ask any follow-up questions as I go through it. But I guess one of the concerns was the directive of impervious surfaces being pushed, pushing water under their property. So kind of an additional part of this berm that we've designed is the ditch that's on the inside of that berm on our property side is gonna be capturing any of that impervious drainage and bringing it back onto our site and ultimately to a water quality pond. Also, as part of the design of that berm, it was designed, you can somewhat see it on this, there's a existing spot elevation showing about every twenty-five feet. And so we took that elevation, simply added three feet or more to it to create the top of that berm, and then did what we could to grade back into a ditch and still leave room for a house on the other side. So that's, that's kind of the thought process of how we got that three-foot berm graded within that. I know they mentioned, to their, to them, they seen that the houses would be requiring a huge amount of fill to create this effect of the houses being up in the air like that. That's not actually true. I guess from our calculations, the, this portion of the site balances within itself. So that's, that's kind of a, something I wanted to clear up there. We're not intentionally forcing these houses into the air. That's the lay of the land and, you know, where these stub roads end up kind of right there at the property line, we need to be at a near existing grade, even with the berm removed. So that, that area is kind of hinned in by existing conditions as it is.
Have y'all confirmed that you can make the tie-in?
Yes.
If, okay. With the berm there, I asked if they've confirmed if they can tie, if, if the property ever develops in the future, whoever ties to that stub, can they make it?
Can hear you, I'm sorry.
If I, if I recall, this, the berm was agreed, was agreed to during the PMDP stage.
Correct, and that was something that Jillian and the planning office brought up to us was there was that color rendering showing the berm as it was presented seven, eight years ago. And so our, our intent with this design was to, to show that being possible. It never showed any dimensions in that, but three foot was generally okayed or agreed upon, so that's, that's kind of the, the look that was presented, you know, years ago that we tried to match there.
Okay. Does, as far as the condition goes about, about the stub with pay, like where the pavement stops, is the condition stating that you want the pavement to be at the property line? Or is engineering comfortable with it stopping short of the, like at the buffer and having the twenty foot buffer?
Sure, so the way that the condition is, is written is that during the construction plan review process, we want to be shown how that roadway could be extended and fit within the exist, with the proposed right of way or with construction easements. And then when we come through with the plat, if it's, I think when they had their initial submittal, they were assuming a ten foot construction easement on the outside of the right of way. Well, during the construction plan review process, we'll determine if that's sufficient or not. It could be fifteen, whatever it is. We want to make sure that that could be constructed within those easements at some future potential date. And then we would want that to be reflected on the final plat as that, as that came through.
Okay. So ultimately, it's showing it in their planning profile that they can construct it vertically and horizontally?
Correct, and we would want to see how, how the berm would be, you know, tied, tied back in.
Okay, so ultimately, engineering's comfortable with the buffer remaining? As long as they can prove that they can extend it in the future if the property ever develops?
Correct.
The pavement will not go into the buffer yard area, just to reiterate, and there's not a condition that asks for that.
Okay, all right. Are there any questions? I am in agreement with that approach. I, I like the idea of the buffer being there as long as they can construct it in the future. Can y'all agree with all the staff comments?
We do.
Something mentioned about parking concerns, has that been addressed as well?
There was a comment from the fire department, actually, that mentioned parking should only be on one side of the street, so we'll, we'll have signage that'll be, you know, detailed in the engineering plan review on which side of the street that is where there will be no parking allowed. And that's more for their apparatus to be able to maneuver through.
Yeah. Other than that, we need engineering standards, cross-sections.
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Entertained a motion? Okay, so we have a motion by Albert, motion of approval with planning's eleven conditions. Your second. Second by Councilman Fan. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All that's opposed? Passing unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to item number eleven. Myers Hill, rezoning with preliminary master development plan. Jillian?
Yes.
This is you?
Yes. The applicant requests approval to zone a seventy-seven point five-five acre parcel that was recently annexed into the city. This is adjacent to Hicks Lane and Dobbins Pike. This is a one hundred and ninety, uh, single family detached residential development with public infrastructure and a connection both to Dobbins Pike, Hicks Lane, and a stubout to the adjacent Triple Creek Park. This project's been before you a couple different times. It did come through about three years ago and didn't make it through the approval process due to concerns about Hicks Lane. They are indicating improvements to Hicks Lane occurring in conjunction with this development. We have added conditions that address that, not just for this part of the property, but all the way out to Dobbins Pike. And it is also noted on the plan. They have also revised this plan to have alley fed product and to limit the number of driveways on road A, which is the connection from Dobbins Pike to the park that goes through a small roundabout that would go down to Hicks Lane. So we have seen a number of improvements in that way to really take into account that this is adjacent to the park and providing that secondary access that has been discussed over the last few months. They do provide a number of amenities, although we have asked for some clarification on some specific programming for those amenities in the open space area. That's something that, moving forward, the city is looking at in more detail, making sure that open space is, is planned very deliberately. And then their architecture, they have indicated that the homes would be seventy percent brick and stone. And then they did provide an exhibit showing potential park connection in the future if the city wanted to make that happen. This is the first voting meeting for this item, so there will be a public hearing on this item. There are ten conditions for your consideration, and this would go on to city council with your recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jillian. Is there a representative from the applicant present? Actually, one second. We need to open up a public comment on this item, so this time we will open for a public comment. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment now. Is there a representative from the applicant?
Jim Harrison, CSDG. Want to thank Jillian for going through those. We are, just to kick things off, we are in agreement with all comments. I did have one clarification about one of the comments that is about the playgrounds. We feel like that playground probably ought to be put in one of the pocket parks, not all of them. That was, we feel like that's probably more appropriate for this size of development. We would centrally locate that. That's the only clarification I had. Everything else we're agreeing to. Hicks Lane paving, we're agreeing to. That's really the one thing that changed in this. Since the project was bought, brought forth three years ago, the road department, the county road department went in there and cleared out and graded the road, so now it's possible to pave it all the way through. So we're committing with this to do that. I did, I wanted to back up a minute and spend just a minute or maybe five minutes to go through some things we're seeing as part of this development, if that's all right.
Yeah, it's fine.
Don't take too long. First, I want to, I've already said thank you, thank you to engineering, thank you to planning, thank you to leadership working on some key things with this site. Jillian, if you can open up that overall view, we had a colored version, but I'm gonna try to talk off of the, the one that shows the park. Yeah, yeah. One of the key things with this, that's really important to us, and we at CSDG, our mission is to design people-centered spaces where real life happens. And part of where real life happens with this is the park and people getting in and out on the weekends. We were very thankful for leadership coordinating with us, helping assist us to create what's a second and third access off to the west. We have coordinated with the right of way owners to the, to the south of this site to make sure we can get right of way dedicated there. But we feel like it's very important. We actually have coordinated with the engineering about how much traffic might be coming out at those peak accesses. That's one of the reasons we, we converted a lot of the lots to alley loaded, so we didn't have driveways along that main road that's running down the middle of the development. But the biggest thing that we're excited about is the, this second and third access to the south or basically back towards Albert Gallatin, as you look at it on the screen, and then back to the west at Dobbins Pike, provides three different accesses for Triple Creek Park, which means that park has a much better chance of functioning and operating well once it fully builds out. And that's a big deal. So we want to be part of that. It's one of the reasons we put a roundabout that staff had recommended a roundabout. We think that will keep traffic moving on those primarily Saturday afternoons or Saturday mornings or Sunday afternoons. But I just wanted to point that out. That's, that's something that had not been worked out previously, and I just wanted to thank staff for helping us work through that. This property is in a key location where that needs to happen because it lays west of all the land that the city owns for around Triple Creek Park, and there's a significant portion of that land that has not been developed yet. So the field number in there will expand over time. We will provide quality homes. Jillian touched on that. We've got forty-two point nine percent open space. I recognize that some of that's in the South How area, but the, one of the fields that overlaps that area is actually gonna be within that area, so we are utilizing that. Within the open space, we have three key locations for pocket parks. That's where I was talking about earlier. We'd like to pick one of those that's more centrally located for a playground, for, for that pocket park. We actually have protected the natural areas, which is a normal thing to do, but we've added additional space around them. You know, we've created walkable neighborhood with the sidewalks. Part, one of the comments we're agreeing to is about extending a trail along that, that stream that bisects the site to connect open space areas, so we're agreeing to that. The other thing that we've done with this is the two large field areas. One of them is located on the southeast corner of the development. One of them's located kind of the northern central part of the development. Those are all very important for us, and we feel like they'll be important to the people that live there, the families that live there, having a place for the kiddos to go play, having a place for the parents to sit on benches beside open spaces that are in landing spots where people could walk through the community. We think that'll create a great neighborhood. We are at two point four six units per acre, which is on the low side of the two to five units per acre, which is recommended per Plan Gallatin. But we're really just here to answer any questions you may have. The bottom line is, we think this creates a, a great neighborhood for families to live. It creates housing for families that live and work and play in our community, and that's important as well. So I just wanted to highlight those things and make myself available to answer any questions. So I just wanted to highlight those things and make myself available to answer any questions. And again, I want to say thank you for staff. I think we've made this plan better together by making comments.
Thanks, Jim. Initial question, this may not, obviously has to do with this project, but is there a master plan for Triple Creek?
There is a parks master plan, but we've been bound by the land around it being private. And so when we talked about this before, I mean, I met with the developers and said, is there any way we can figure out this connection if you're going to develop it? Because, I mean, the city would love to have the land, but they're trying to, you know, the owner wants to maximize the value and develop it and understand that. And so I'm grateful that they're willing to work with our existing parkland because that access has long been a big challenge. I think that, you know, the master plan does not include this property because it's not our property, but it does, it does have a parks master plan.
Okay. I was just curious. Yes, sir?
Well, I just want to say, I like this plan, and I like the open space that's involved with it, even the smaller lots, because, I mean, this is an opportunity where people have the smaller lots, and if they want a place to throw ball, they're right next to it.
They got a big place, yeah.
Couldn't work better, but what I'm really excited about is that you did the alley-loaded along that main corridor. So if I understand this plan correctly, you have almost no driveway connections on the main corridor A, except maybe a, no?
None.
Actually, none, and a roundabout to boot. So I will just kick it off by saying, I'll make a motion that we approve with staff's 10 conditions, but modify condition seven to remove the word "both."
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I agree. I think that from the first time this plan came through, it's a huge improvement. And I think the fact that you're working with the county too to help with Hicks Lane goes a long way, so. All right, so we have a motion and a second. There's no other discussion?
Second in the motion.
Aye. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passage unanimously. Thank you. All right. Next, we will go to item number 12, Frank Property Annexation and Plan of Service.
Yes, the owner and applicant are requesting annexation of a 5.09 acre parcel with the adopted Plan of Service for this property. This property is surrounded on all sides by the city. This is one of the last little pockets in this part of town along Highway 25 east of 109. This item did get the petition to apply, approved through City Council, and so they applied to Planning Commission, and with your recommendation, this will go back to City Council for final review and consideration. No plan or zoning is attached to this request. This is just for the annexation. And this will require a public comment, and this would go to City Council following your recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this item has a public comment, so we will open that at this time. If there's anyone wishing to speak in this public comment section, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. And then we will call for a representative from the applicant. Okay. So, seeing none. Is there any comments or questions?
Just, if I remember correctly, this was from the working session. This was the last lot that hasn't been annexed.
It is. So you can kind of see on this map, all the color, that's all city. So the blue is this one parcel. So yes, on all sides.
Yeah, this, in my opinion, this makes total sense.
I mean, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a second. Well, John gave me to it. So we have a motion for Mike, second by John. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passage unanimously. Okay. Go to our item number 13, Gregory Roundtree Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Julian?
Yes, the owner and applicant is requesting the Planning Commission to consider an amendment to Plan Gallatin. This will be to the character, community character map, as well as the sub-area designation map. This property is adjacent to Roundtree. It is just north of the meta-facility, is approximately 325 acres. This annexation was considered by Planning Commission last month for annexation, and is going through City Council right now. But in lieu of anticipating industrial development on this property, they would like to amend the comprehensive plan to accommodate that future development. This hasn't been zoned yet, it's not been annexed yet, but because our comprehensive plan, it considers our entire urban growth boundary, it does not have to be annexed to be considered. Keep in mind, since the City Council did also adopt our comp plan, this will also be considered by the City Council at a future meeting. So for first, we have the character map. As you can see here, this is where our discussions of rural, suburban, general, urban come up. This property is just on the portion right up here. It is split between the suburban and the rural character areas, and in order to support the industrial development, they would like to change it to the general urban. As you can see, south of it and along Airport Road, most of our industrial development is in the general urban character area. But because general urban also has many residential capabilities as well in terms of density, staff in particular thought that extending this sub-area, the number four sub-area, which is specifically the Gallatin Gateway Industrial Center sub-area, extending that into this property further supports that intent for industrial development. So we think both of these are really necessary to do what the intended, to really make it clear what our intent is with this property. Staff does recommend approval of this item, and there is a public comment with this. And like I said, Planning Commission adopted Plan Gallatin, but the City Council did as well, so they will consider that. This was advertised 30 days in advance in the paper, as required when we amend the comp plan.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you, Julian. Is there a representative? Actually, no, hold on, public comment. Okay, at this time, we will open up a public comment for anyone wishing to speak on this item.
Hey, everybody, Rosemary Bay's Gallatin Economic Development Agency, 132 West Main Street. I encourage you to vote in favor of the change to the comprehensive plan. This is an area that, in hindsight, should have been designated as industrial, and it actually was the City Council who noted that we had no industrial areas that we could attach, so, but going forward, I hope that you'll look at this approvingly, and the council wanted to make sure the comp plan amendment had been made before they vote on the annexation, and then hopefully soon vote on the rezoning as well. They just want to assure that if it's annexed, the property owner cannot change their mind and go from industrial to residential. So this would assure them that that would, the purpose is to go industrial with that property. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. And then, now we will call for a representative from the applicant.
Andy Leath, Greenlee Design, 114B, West Main. So the other thing I want to add, I think the question brought up, was brought up at the work session, why are we doing this now? And at the time, my employees' act didn't have the answer, but we were asked to do this by the city. And I believe the reason the city asked us to do this is to go ahead and put it out there that we are going to in fact ask for industrial zoning when the time comes. That's why we're willing to change the comp plan now, to say, hey, before this gets in the council and under discussion, our owner's willing to make the commitment to change the comp plan to ask for industrial zoning.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. Any questions? Yes, sir?
First of all, I want to say I'm in favor of this. This needs to happen. I just have one question about the process. Can you go back to that page where you showed the, the character sub-areas? That, that one right there. I'm not sure I fully understand why we're adding a really specific blob onto that. When we did this, this was supposed to be kind of abstract concepts of general area, not very specific polygons that outline an area. Are we going to start making this a secondary map to our character map?
I don't.
I think that's a great question.
I mean, I don't think so. I think it's just because there was a lot of kind of hyper-concern about, say, this doesn't happen 20 years from now. If somebody looked at and saw general urban, then they could come in there and bang their fists and say they're entitled to build downtown Gallatin out there. And, and it seemed like putting some kind of subtype would, I don't know, give some certainty to all of the interested stakeholders in that area to know what would be there at some point in the future. Is that fair?
Yeah, I mean, I think what this map doesn't give you is that certainty. It leaves the discussion open for interpretation, right? But that can go both directions, and if you look at the map and say, hey, you know, that area is outside the gray area, then, you know, you might interpret that, that, you know, it's not necessarily designated for something that would be industrial. This kind of just helps clear that up for anyone who's trying to make that argument. And so we just feel like, you know, rather than leaving it more questionable, it's, it helps to say, hey, this area is for sure under that gray area, and there's no, there's no question at that point.
I do, I truly do understand what you're trying to do there. I just know that this is supposed to be an ink blob map.
Yeah. No, we, we get that. We do. And of course, we sort of looked at it, the way I sort of look at this map is you have a few ink blobs, and then you have some little corridor areas that are not quite so ink blobs, you know, they're, they're more specific. So this is maybe one of those more specific times when you do get a little bit closer to, to what it actually should be versus any block.
I think it's since we've actually completed the plan, the regional planning authority went away, and so we didn't, when we completed it, have properties coming into the city with no zoning. And so, I mean, I guess that's something that's a little bit different than it was when we completed.
And I'll just make a comment. I mean, I agree with what Councilman Juvent said last time, that, you know, it, I think it would be good to have an industrial designation on our character area map. I think that's, that's the step that I would like us to move in. And frankly, you know, once we're kind of through with this code process, I do want to start up a comprehensive plan amendment that would allow us to make some mapping changes that get, get us in that direction. But we need more time to be able to do that, and right now, we don't have that with this application.
Again, I think that has to do with the timing of that, because when we did that plan, there was a whole lot more land that looked like it could become industrial, but it got used up. We didn't see the, see the, not used up, it got well, you know, well-invested in. But, but, I mean, we just, we thought there was plenty out there sort of that already had industrial zoning, so.
I don't either. I think this is very much in line with what we've been presented up to this point, so I'm, entertaining a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Albert, second by Mike. Any discussion? Seeing none, we go to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passage unanimously. Thank you. Next, we will go to item number 14, Caldwell Place, amended preliminary master development plan. Brad?
Good evening, Commissioners. Brad Hickman, staff planner. The owner and applicant request approval of the amended preliminary master development plan and revised final master development plan for Caldwell Place on 18.39 acres, zoned MRO, multiple residential and office district, located east of Cages Bend and south of Nashville Pike. The impetus for the developer to bring this back was to lengthen lots to provide porches for some of the lots, or for some of the townhomes, I should say. As far as issues, there were some issues around labeling. Would like to see hydrants with the no parking signs and painted curbs within 15 feet as requested by fire. There is a sidewalk running around, running along Cages Bend to the south of the property that's, that has some difficulties in the right-of-way, that a, I believe Engineering can speak more to this with the applicant, they may need to make an easement to have that sidewalk get around those grading difficulties. The planning department recommends approval of the resolution. With these non-conditions, we do recommend it as a minor amendment, and there is public comment.
Thank you. As Brad mentioned, at this time, we'll open up a public comment for anyone wishing to speak on this item. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Is there a representative for the applicant present?
Luke Tally with CSDG. We are in agreement with all comments except number three, and that's the one regarding the sidewalk extending to the property line. Would like to talk about what's somewhat more practical in that area. I know there's a property to the south that has a drainage ditch right up against the road, Cages Bend Road. So if we were to pull a sidewalk all the way to that point, it would essentially dam up that drainage area. So what we've discussed with engineering and planning is building that sidewalk up to a point where it's feasible to allow the property next door to make that tie-in when drainage is more figured out on their property.
Engineering, how many comments or statements related to that?
Just to kind of echo that, I mean, it's, it's our requirement to have sidewalk along the public roadway frontage. Somehow this, this segment was, was missed when this was initially coming through. We noticed that, and that's where the comment came from. And, you know, if it's built to the extent practical, and then if we have easements or things in place to where, if the adjacent property develops that it can be tied into, that's what we'd be looking for. And then any part of this sidewalk that is outside of the public right-of-way would need a pedestrian access easement over it.
Okay. Are y'all in agreement with that?
We are, yes.
That already stated as a condition.
We'd have to rewrite three, I think.
We'd have to rewrite three?
I think the only difference, or the only thing that would need to be added, would be to the extent practical.
So you're saying simply add the wording "to the extent practical" to condition number three?
That should, that should accomplish that, because right now, we're saying extend it along Cages Bend, so that's, that's saying the entire frontage.
You have a major, minor motion?
We do. At this time, I will entertain a motion on whether this is a major or minor amendment.
Make a motion that is a minor amendment.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second, that it's a minor amendment. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of it being a minor amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so it's a minor amendment. I, I, I'll take a stab at a motion. I think this is a, very much an improvement, which is why I voted that it was a minor. But I will make a motion to approve with all of staff's conditions, except amending item number three to extend five-foot sidewalk along Cages Bend from lots 37 to property limits. What'd you say?
To the extent.
To the extent practical, period. And then keep the rest the same. And we have a second from Albert. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we will go to item number 15, Lowe's of Gallatin Outdoor Sales Display Plan, amended PMDP. Brad.
The owner and applicant requests approval of an amended preliminary master development plan and revised final master development plan for an 18,468 square foot outdoor display addition to the Lowe's Home Center on a 14.8 acre lot, zoned PGC, planned general commercial located at 1301 Nashville Pike. We can see on this submitted plan, the additional storage areas they want are in this area here, along these areas here, and in the rear of the store here and here. The applicant has submitted, coming off of North Blue Jay Way, when you come into the entrance there, three proposals for three different fences to screen any of the storage that would be in this area here. And also from Brown's Lane, as you come in from that entrance, it's difficult to see with the smallest here, but there is a row of shrubs blocking, partially blocking the rental equipment that is parked there in the parking spaces. This was the original PMDP showing storage here and here. It has expanded quite a bit in the meantime. They did have a little added with the tool center, but just here, not where the existing tools are now in this area. And we do have some current pictures of the Lowe's parking lot. Here's over by the tool center, up near Discount Tire, further down the, the, adjacent to the accessway that goes from North Blue Jay up to Brown's Lane. And we have over here north, near North Blue Jay, you see the open tractor trailers. Just some examples of the current state of the parking lot.
And I'll clarify, that's, those are pictures from about three months ago when we started having these conversations, three or four months ago.
The planning department recommends denial of this resolution.
Hey, thanks, Brad. At this point, we will open up a public comment for anyone wishing to speak on this item. Seeing nobody wishing to speak, we will close public comment. And we'll ask a representative from the applicant to come forward.
Evening, Todd Bartok with Lowe's Home Improvement. And thank you all for having me here tonight. I am open to discuss any of those screening issues that we have. I know that you have recommended denial, but we're trying to do what we can do to keep the store successful and still meet the intent of the code in screening. As I was here before, I'd asked for a little bit more information. You know, we can, we could throw up whatever it is that you, what y'all would like to see, but without any, you know, that's why I asked them to put three, three different types of fencing in. And, you know, when you look at the screening for the equipment, you know, they wanted to draw, you know, 15-foot cypress trees in there. And I said, no, no, let's show them what we're going to plant and then knowing that they, they will grow and, and block that view. So I think there was some other intent to have some of the view triangles coming out of the parking for the, you know, the solid fence. And that was one of the reasons why we put the vinyl coated chain link fence in there as a, as an option, which gives you a little bit more visibility, but does still screen. We can also attach the fabric on the backside of the fence to keep it more opaque.
Yeah, I, I apologize, I was not here for the work session. I was out of state. I, for me, I think it's less about the screening and more about, like, I think we're doubling the amount of outdoor storage on the site. And I know my question to, to staff was, okay, do we still, I mean, I was wondering if we still met parking requirements with the amount of storage that's being placed. I've been told that we do, or y'all are. I think y'all are pretty well overparked. My, my question is with the outdoor storage, like with the mulch, do you, is it one of those things where it's an, it's an inventory thing? Where you have to hold so much inventory? And that's why there's so many pallets there? Or is it like, okay, we just ordered too much and now we need a place to store it?
It's a logistics thing. It, obviously, for us to have 10 trucks show up and unload it at one time and stack it in the parking lot is a lot less man-hours to have a truck come every day and then have forklift drive out there and unload and do that. So it's, it's, it's how Lowe's is doing it. It's way above my pay grade, as I said last time, in the, in the fact that, you know, I don't make the rules, I just try and abide by them. And this is, this is just the way that, that Lowe's has decided to operate all 1,700 stores where we can.
Okay, I'm assuming that we don't have room behind the building to store it?
There is room for storage behind the building.
But it's used.
But, but then you're driving a forklift all the way around to get material and bring it back out there every time we, because that's where we do our quick load.
Okay. But with this, you're driving a forklift through the parking lot where customers are walking and going back and forth to the store?
No, that's why we put it in there like that, is we're not driving forklifts. We're unloading them at, in the evening hours, getting them on site. And then the quick load is where our two employees are out there and somebody drives up that's bought 15 bags and.
That makes sense. I, go ahead.
I didn't realize until you showed those pictures tonight. Well, prior to seeing those pictures tonight, I thought this was a question of, can we do this? But this is a question of, it's already been done. Is it okay, right? I mean, this is already in place, all this stuff.
They're, they're asking for permission to make it okay, where it's not okay, but they've done it anyway. So it was noticed as a violation of the, of the ordinance because they're not following their site plan approval, where, you know, they didn't have the approval to store all this stuff out, out in the parking lot per the original site plan. And so, and accordance with the zoning ordinance even, you know, it's, it's listed in your report, GOS Town Zoning Ordinance, section 11.02.050, maintenance and use of off-street parking facilities, which states, "All required off-street parking facilities shall be maintained for duration of the use requiring such facilities. Such facilities are to be used solely for the temporary parking of personal vehicles. Personal vehicles include passenger cars, vans, pickup trucks, recreational vehicles, trailers under 20 feet in length, and boats. Off-street parking facilities may not be used for the sale, display, or storage of merchandise, or for the storage and repair of vehicles or equipment." So that's the section that we're quoting out of the zoning ordinance in addition to the fact that it's not, you know, approved as, as part of their site plan either.
I, I didn't realize until tonight that this was an ask for forgiveness item instead of an ask for permission item. But if this had been on the original site plan when we looked at Lowe's and they wanted that much outdoor sales area, I know I would have required or suggested the requirement of an opaque barrier. And if there's not an opaque barrier, if you can't get a 15-foot Leyland cypress in there, then you're limited to a 24-inch wide opaque barrier, which is called a brick wall, surrounding some of these outdoor sales areas. That's the only alternative you have when you can't get a 15-foot wide greenery barrier. Now, I don't know how to deal with the stuff on the lower right.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Brick slash combination brick wood fence.
Yeah.
Opaque, opaque barrier.
What was the orig, I mean, do we have a square footage of the originally approved, like, amount of area?
I believe Brad had put it in the report. It was 11,520, is that right, Brad?
And what are the, what's the new request?
It's for 18,000 more.
Oh, 18,000 more?
Additional.
Yes. And you can see here, like shown before, the highlighted area, these, these gray areas.
Yeah.
It's, it's storage there, so.
I mean, I, don't get me wrong, like I, I want the store to be successful. I'm, I, I don't want it to hurt. I mean, I, I go to this Lowe's all the time. All the time. And I can, I mean, with the, I don't know why we didn't ask for, or create that right there. I don't know why we didn't add that to the site plan whenever they did the tour rental. But it was, it wasn't added. When they, when we did the tour rental add-on to the building, I don't know why the tour rentals weren't added as an outdoor storage area.
What they added when that happened was just, you can see underneath that blue little sign off to the right, that's the only little area that was added back then.
I may.
Yes.
So we've done away with the tour rental. And the only place that we have tour rentals is in the most popular area and the most, you know, most profitable. And this store is one of the most profitable. You guys have a lot of building going on here, and we're, we're killing it on the tour rental. They took all the tour rental equipment from other locations and, you know, have distributed them to the highest performers.
Okay. Like, that picture right there, what it screams to me is, I mean, you're correct, it's a logistics issue. I, I don't, I don't know if it's like, okay, let's order one less truck. That way, we're not utilizing it. But, I mean, to have stacks and stacks and stacks, I, I, to me, like, if I was running the store, I wouldn't want that. I, I think that looks tacky. But that's just my opinion. I, I mean, that, we're more than doubling the outdoor storage. And again, I want the store to be successful, but I just, I don't, I don't know if there's a happy medium. Like, how, how long is it taking for that to go away? Or is y'all just ordering that for the whole season?
We ordered that for the whole season. So that's three months worth of material that sits out there. And the only thing we could do is limit it.
Yeah.
And we'll bring a truck a day.
Is it, I mean, have y'all, did you, three months ago, obviously, that was three months ago. Is it still there? Okay, so y'all sold all of it? Sweet.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say, I mean, as someone who shops there a lot, my exposure has been that it really fills up and loads up, particularly in the spring season. And it is chaos, especially if you're on that garden side, trying to deal with everything. And part of me worries about what that looks like when you're, you've got less space and running out of stuff, when everybody, everybody tries to get it like in about the same two weekends. And it is absolute chaos, and they have it very, very loaded up. But then I feel like it goes away, but I, I know three months flies in a second, so. Maybe it was three months. But yeah, some of the.
But the, I guess the request is that those storage areas be allowed for, what was it, 120 days? 180 days?
So the, the, the map had showed several different hashes. And so those had different timeframes as far as what they were requesting. Brad, do you want to try to recap what, what those were again?
Yeah, we do have permanent storage and temporary. So temporary is.
Temporary, I believe it's here, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then the tour storage would be permanent.
Permanent.
Here, and then we have temporary here. Or is that permanent?
I think it says on there.
That one is temporary.
Temporary, yeah, I believe that.
Temporary bagged goods, sales and display.
These two?
Those two are permanent. The one to the left is permanent.
Temporary, one of these was.
One of those is, yeah.
The one on the right is temporary.
Yeah.
The one on the left is, looks like, I guess, it's just permanent. It says outdoor storage.
It was existing. This is.
That was existing, yeah.
This one's, this one's, these are, I think, taking these spots are new.
We're asking for permanent because of the fact that we, if we can get it permanent, we don't keep material out there if we're not selling it. You know, in the middle of winter, we're not selling mulch.
I mean, the only, I will say, the, the good thing about where y'all are storing it all around the bottom right is that's right at the foot of the retaining wall.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you, you're looking over it, it's not like it's blocking the view of the store. And I, the fence along the left side, like, I may, out of all the times I've been to the store, I've maybe used the entrance off Blue Jay, like, only like once or twice. Everyone comes off of the, off of Gallatin Road. So you're not, that fence, in my opinion, is not really even doing anything. And I also don't know if it makes sense to wrap it, like, around the bottom, because then you get into a sight distance issue with people leaving the store.
I'll say this, in my opinion, the left side of the building is probably the least obtrusive area where storage could happen. Frankly, I think.
Can you circle what you're talking about with the pointer, or do you have that?
Yeah.
There.
Up, up, next to the building. Yeah, next to the building.
I agree with that statement.
So what if.
So it's out of the way of your parking areas where people are generally frequenting.
Yeah.
I, if it were me, I would want to see them do some sort of shelving units that allow for vertical stacking in those areas. Shield them, leave the driveway open, but, I mean, you know, do some sort of fencing shield that at least blocks the visibility of it. And then, you know, see, see how much they can get into that area. And if you have to limit to multiple deliveries, I don't think that that's a terrible thing. I don't, I don't see why the entire season worth of materials has to be stored on-site from the get-go.
I mean, do y'all, do y'all have any issues with all its going missing?
No.
Out in the parking lot?
I mean, if it is, it's insignificant.
Yeah.
I mean, we get, shrink is always an option.
Yeah.
Always a problem.
I mean, how, what, what is the, what is the left, I guess, in, in the bottom left? You see, there's, there's two rows of parking that are left open. What is that area compared to the area that's in the bottom right for temporary? Because my other thought is, instead of doing, having multiple locations everywhere on the site plan, the stuff in the bottom right gets shifted over to the left, and you're able to consolidate everything into one location. And you can easy, more easily, not only screen it, but also potentially put a temporary fence around it to where it's clustered, and it doesn't look like it's scattered all over the parking lot.
Over to the left versus the right, where the retaining wall is screening it? I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to get clarification.
Yes. I mean, I, what I, I get, from that, I understand the retaining wall is screening it, yes. I understand that. But whenever you're coming up from Gallatin Road, you're looking to the store to the right. Like, yes, you can see the stuff to the left, but there's already stuff over there to the left. So people are used to seeing stuff over to the left. I think, so my thought is, you basically consolidate all your outdoor storage into three rows of parking, and you only have the tour, the tour rental stuff makes sense to be over where you're showing it, because it's, it's right out the door of the tour rental. Like, I don't think it makes sense to move that. But the rest of the stuff, I mean, you're already storing stuff over there temporarily anyways. So then you can consolidate everything, and it's, I don't know, it doesn't look like it's scattered everywhere. Yes.
Yeah, to add to your concern, my concern also is in the lower right, behind the tire store. All those rows of palletized mulch and other goods that you have right there, yeah. That's a traffic area. When people pull into the store, I know when I come in there, I come through and I turn right and go, if I'm gonna go over to contractor sales, I'll turn right and go down through there. Now we have forklift movement and loading people? Is that where they load people right there?
No, they don't do loading there. That's just when, it, it, after, after everyone's left the parking lot. If that needs to be restocked on the left-hand side, they'll pull it from there with the forklift.
They're not loading while people are moving.
No, no. That, that, and, and that's also why we're unloading the trucks at, at that time.
That's a relief.
Now, you think about this too, logistics, logistically. If I'm bringing a truck in every other day, or I'm bringing them all in at one time at night, that's less traffic on the city streets, it's less.
I understand.
You know, I mean, it's less impact, and that's what we're after. We're after trying to get, we, we don't wanna be that company that, oh, man, every day I have to follow this Lowe's truck down to the Lowe's, you know, and he, nobody wants that. So, we're just trying to get it in, have it there, so that we can sell it. And five bags for ten bucks? It's, it, that's why we move it so quickly.
Yeah.
CJ? So, if I understand right, what you were suggesting is to take what's here and plop it right in between those two segments where there's a gap and it's parking right in there.
Correct.
Instead of leaving it spread so far all, all over there, and then put a fence all the way around that whole thing.
I mean, that would make the most sense to me, but.
Is that what you were saying?
Yeah.
And just block off those driveways completely, and just let there be an entrance and an exit or something where people can get in there and load it up. Or that Lowe's can pull it into their, you know, where, where people have to come into the store and get it, or, I don't know.
Yeah.
But.
Cost them a ton of labor.
If, if that had a screen fence around it, at least then it's not just sitting out there and ugly, you know, for all to look at.
I mean, that, didn't they, so go back to one of those pictures?
Are we talking about a temporary fence or a permanent fence?
Uh, no, I'm talking about temporary fence.
Okay.
Keep going. Keep going. That, I mean, you're, go back, you already have, you already have a temporary fence.
Yeah.
You do that.
Where's the temporary?
So, that's a.
Right in front of all the pallets.
That's a chain link fence, but it's not screened. But, what we'd wanna see is it being screened.
We can put the cloth on it.
I don't, I mean, it's only there for, I mean, if you wanted to screen it, I'm fine with that too. But, I mean, I, I think that this would more solidify their area of outdoor storage as opposed to having it everywhere. I mean, what are the, what are the semi trucks for? Or the semi trailers for?
Uh, typically those have either straw, you know, hay in it.
Okay.
For seating. There's other material that's in there, too.
This whole.
Find straw.
I mean, I, this, this area is already being used by stuff anyways. So, I'm at, I think consolidating it would be, would make more sense to me. I mean, that's, at this point, I'm just throwing my opinions out there.
But even if we consolidate, we are increasing their exterior.
Yes.
Warehousing storage from eleven thousand square feet to twenty-nine thousand square feet. And this is all a problem, this is all, this whole change with Lowe's and all their stores is a result of the supply chain issues that we've been having over the last two or three years. Just-in-time supply just doesn't work anymore. I know, I'm in business.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but I'm trying to think what other businesses are out there that we might encounter that wanna start using their parking lot for inventory, for warehousing. And I'm just trying to think through it. Are we setting a precedent here?
Well, I think part, part of the concern that I still have too is that this property is zoned PGC, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, which was not zoned for, like, construction sales and service. It was zoned for retail, right? And, and we, we counted this as a retail establishment because it is largely still a lot of retail sales, right? Um, yes, there is a, a construction materials component to this whole thing, but a lot of it's still household goods and other things. Um. You start storing a lot of things outside, and it looks and feels a lot more like a construction yard versus a retail establishment. And so, I, I still think, I don't know that you'd have to do a, a, an every day or an every other day, but, you know, what about, you know, once every other week or something like that? Uh, you have a delivery, and, you know, six to twelve times in a season, you, you know, get, get a delivery, and it uses up a lot smaller of an area than what you might need if you had every bit of your product delivered all at, at the same time. I think there's, there's, that's an option as well. But, trying to store everything does make it feel a lot more like a construction sales and service type of a use versus a retail establishment. And, and the zoning is not such that it, it provides for that.
Oh, with the very minimum, this needs to be, uh, voted as a major, it's an amendment, so it needs to be a major amendment that goes to council. It's not a minor amendment. It changes use, and it changes circulation.
That's a good point.
Problem we typically have is when, when there's a warm spring day, and, you know, it's been raining for several weeks, and everybody comes at one time, and then we go through that mulch really quickly.
Yeah.
Then, you come to the store and you wanna buy your twenty bags of mulch.
Hmm.
We don't have.
Yeah.
That's the problem. Then you go to that guy over in the orange box and buy it, and we don't like that.
Yeah. I mean, I, knowing that it's temporary, I mean, that makes me feel better about it. And again, like, I, I, I just, for whatever reason, feel more comfortable knowing that it's consolidated. I don't wanna move the tour rental. And I think that we could probably do a better job of, of screening it, as opposed, I mean, I don't know how tall those bushes get, but, um. I mean, I, I like the fact that you're trying to screen it along the backside. But definitely needs to be screened. I don't know what that looks like. John, you're gonna have more knowledge on the actual plant material. But.
We've been very successful with Aravides. Um, they grow fast.
Yeah.
They grow pretty tall, and they create just a green wall.
Okay.
Because we plow, uh, plant them about six feet on center, and they grow into each other, so.
So, is that what the holly is?
No, it, it, this group didn't wanna do that, um, because it it would grow too tall.
Yeah.
So, when you're driving in, it's gonna block the tour rental sign. So, um, but we have done it on other projects where council has asked us to seriously screen the material.
Yeah.
I can't remember, what's, um, isn't there a vacant lot to the right of the store?
Yeah, that's where a hotel is planned.
Oh, that's right. It's a shame y'all didn't grab that lot for inventory storage. It was a quarry at one time.
You know, there is another, you asked the question about other stores with similar issues. There is another major big box, not just a home store down the road, that does similar parking lot setups, um, in the spring particularly. Or, I don't know if they have permission to have that there, or, a, a, and I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, I'm just saying, if they do, then that gives us something to follow, and if they don't, then I guess we have to. But I don't mind, I do not mind the spring, the mulch, the bags. That, that is kind of the ambiance of the season, and kind of like what makes people happy, to see the flowers and the mulch and the trees and all the plants, and, um, even the piles, not the piles of rock, but the bags of, you know, rock piled up and other stuff that you get in the spring. It's the, you know, assortment of stuff that's there more often that doesn't make people make me happy that I'm, I'm a little challenged with. Like, I don't even mind how you have the lawn mowers and stuff lined up out front.
Oh.
I should probably stop talking.
Main reason that the planning department's against this is because of the zoning?
Well, just that it doesn't meet the, the, the regulations that were set forth in the beginning, and with the zoning ordinance and the site plan. I mean, aesthetically, we want our sites to look good, you know, and that, that's part of what the zoning is set up for. And, you know, when you have stuff strewn all over the place, it's, it just doesn't look good.
Which is why I mentioned potentially consolidating everything, at least the temporary stuff, over to one side, and then.
If they bring it in all at once, as it sells, it's gonna condense. Would that be correct?
Yeah.
You're gonna condense it?
Uh, no, we were asking for the seventeen thousand square feet. We're, we're doing that because.
Oh, he, he's saying as the material sells off, the temporary area condenses over time. And then to the point to where, after the hundred and twenty days, you no longer need it, and it goes back to parking.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And.
Is that what you were asking, Steve?
Yeah, that, are you bringing your, are you bringing the, the whole season's inventory at one time?
Yes.
We're, well, yeah, but we have to replenish it. I mean, that's how quickly we go through it. But, yes, we're bringing in that whole area.
Do you replenish the whole inventory, or do you replenish, replenish it as needed?
Uh, it's an as needed. But what, we bring it all in, just in case we get hit, like we have in many stores where we'll sell out on a weekend, that whole seventeen thousand square feet of bags of mulch.
Okay.
I gotta go to a question.
Yes.
If you own Lowe's stock, should you abstain?
No, but thank you.
Uh, that's a question for him.
It's, if you've owned it, it's pretty good stock.
Give me yours. Give me an example of another store. I, uh, instead of talking about Lowe's here, what is another type of store out there that?
Tractor Supply?
Thank you. That's a good example. If all of a sudden they wanna increase their exterior warehousing inventory storage. Um, what are we gonna tell them? When we say no?
Well, I mean, so here's, here's my thing, is.
I don't think that.
It comes down to, go ahead.
I don't think that any possible effect on the stock from whether or not you require fencing is, I, I don't think that that's a realistic, uh, expectation that it would affect the stock price one way or the other. So, I don't believe you'd have to, uh, recuse yourself, Brian, unless you just.
Yeah, I mean, he's asking if he, if, if he's, if he owns some sort of, you know, interest in the company, does that require him to recuse himself?
Okay. Uh.
You own a hubcap on one of their.
I think, John.
I think it's if you own ten percent or more. I think, I, I bet you're safer, you wouldn't be here with us.
All of our 401Ks have some Lowe's in there, so that was the problem then.
Yeah.
So, I'll circle back. What are we gonna tell Tractor Supply when they wanna increase their exterior warehousing inventory space for supply chain issues by three hundred percent? Because that's what we're doing right here.
I think it would come down to whether or not they meet parking requirements.
And that's it?
I mean, I, that's a huge deciding factor, in my opinion. And I, I think the fact that this is temporary and not permanent, I think, goes a long way as well. I mean, I, the thing is, I mean, you pull up to, this, this is a, this is a retail establishment that you expect this at. So, this is not like it's out of the norm.
But as Brian said, it's, it's retail, it's not construction warehousing. It's not, you know, it's not a construction yard.
Correct. But it's, it's a, a use that is active in its place, functioning. I mean, yes, it's retail, but it, I mean, it's a, it's a contractor store.
How many parking spaces are they required? Do you have any idea for Lowe's? Did you ever, did you look at that?
I believe it was around two fifty, and they were authorized for over five hundred.
Oh, so.
Sure.
Just warning you, under that.
This.
Thought they could take half their parking space and say, we're gonna use half of it for inventory warehousing.
Uh, it would still, it would still depend on, I mean, that's if the, that's if that, that's if, like Tractor Supply, that's if they overparked themselves by a hundred percent.
They generally do.
The.
They did in the past.
Yeah. I mean, I.
The numbers were.
I don't know, I mean, I.
The numbers were two hundred and eighty-six spaces required, and five hundred forty-one parking spaces provided.
And the classic example was Walmart always, until Stormwater came along, and it became a real issue about impervious service, Walmart was notorious for creating far more parking than they actually needed. And the, the logic behind it was that if you had a big giant empty parking lot that was only twenty percent full, you felt like you were parking near the door, whereas you might actually be parking two or three hundred feet away. Now, when Stormwater came along, parking started getting down to just what they needed, because it got expensive to have impervious, impervious surface. So, I'm just concerned about what we tell the next person that comes in and wants to convert fifty percent of their giant enormous excessive parking lot into exterior inventory storage. And I, I just think we're setting a precedent here.
Who'd you say, John?
Oh, well, that was, they always cite Walmart. I'm not picking on them, but Walmart always created far more parking lot than they actually needed, more spaces. But once Stormwater came along and parking lots started costing a lot in the way of Stormwater mitigation, people backed off of that and started just creating just what they needed. I bet our current Walmart has far more parking than they actually have to have.
Hmm. Well, I mean, that's why they started developing all the out parcels.
The old K-Marks used to be the same thing. I'm not picking on Walmart.
Yeah.
It was all the big, big stores like that. I'm, I, I'm inclined to agree with staff on this and say no, and I love to shop at Lowe's. Um, I gotta come up with a solution here, but I, not as it's, is it, as it is here.
Another option is if the applicant wants to still work towards a better solution. I mean, they can always request a, a deferral, and we work, we're, work some more things out, and then come back next month or something.
Yeah, it's not like it's going anywhere.
I wanna find a way to make, I mean, 'cause, I mean, when you compare it, like, like I was thinking about the one that you mentioned, which I hate to mention any of them out loud, but there's another one in town, and their storage area is as big as their store, but their parking lot is very, very, very small. So.
Can you give me a clue where, where you're talking about?
Near, near the Dairy Queen.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's the one parking lot in town you see that's always full. And I don't know if that was built like that, you know, if that was built with that intended.
Oh, it was always a huge parking lot. We used to go do donuts.
Pardon?
Oh, yeah.
We're being recorded here.
Oh, that's true, too. He's, he knows all of them. He's over here feeding me a bunch of them that make me think about it.
Okay.
I guess it's kind of the evolution of doing business that makes me think, as we update the zoning code, that we need the seasonal sto- well, we just actually did one with the Uggrow Farms where they have an outdoor seasonal storage area, so.
Would you please request deferral, so we can come up with an answer for you?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you very well.
Could you please request deferral, so we can come up with an answer for you?
Trying not to.
I know.
You know, 'cause I, I haven't had much luck with staff giving me any direction as to how I can solve this problem, because I could come here twenty times without, and every time get shot down. I'm really looking for either direction or a yes.
I, I would ask, what solutions have you all reached in other communities to make this work, to meet the, meet their codes and regulations? Um, this is honestly kind of a new exposure for us, and we wanna help, you know, Lowe's continue to be very successful in our community, and your logistics makes perfectly good sense, but I'm certainly not a designer or a, or a solution-oriented, like, like, I'm sure some people are, and it's not, the planning staffs, I mean, they can say, you know, this falls within our code, or no, this does not. But I bet there are some solutions that you guys have already created in other communities that could help make sense here. I don't know. Um.
They vary. They vary from, you know, temporary fencing, like we have here around the area in which we're putting that, that storage, to, um, the solid wood fence. The, the problem we have is that we're trying not to block the view of our store. We're trying to not block traffic views coming out of parking areas. So, it, it becomes very.
Complicated?
It, it, it's a complicated solution. And one of the other ways that we've been doing it is with vegetation.
Yeah.
Like I said, with the Aravides. Like I said, with the our Vitis and that's one of the things that we can do.
I mean.
Create the green wall.
The landscaping is always nice. It sounds like that probably the direction that our in your shoes would go would be to try and, um, not have it distributed all across the site, but maybe some on that left wall and some up by the retaining wall and then figure out what is more seasonal and what's not. And then what those, um, what, what can be done to make it most aesthetic? And I'm, I'm just kind of trying to summarize based on what I've heard. And your business has evolved and changed since you've been here. I know that, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Everybody's had since two thousand twenty.
Do you have this, I'm, I'm, the, the Lowe's that you have in Madison, is it, as far as property, is it the size of this one or is it larger?
I, I'm not familiar with that one. I, I, I only get involved when there's an issue. So there's not an issue there.
Yes.
We have seventeen hundred stores, so I can't, I can't get them all.
Coming up with a solution here. CJ?
Do I now? Go ahead.
Your, your storage on the left side of the building, um, on the plan, it shows a upper left photo with an arrow going to it. There's a storage, is that just single level? Can we do as, as he suggests, you go vertical, have your racks? I know that's more expensive, but if you're truly, you're not loading from that, you're just stocking inventory there to reload, to, to move it back out and replenish your supply out front in the approved areas. Why can't you go with vertical storage there and vertical storage in the back as additional inventory space?
The, the biggest thing right now is financially. It, it's much more expensive because we would have to make that all concrete, that asphalt back there. And we'd have to put structural foundation in for those racks. So it would, it would, I would have to go back to our estimating department and say, hey, what, what's it gonna cost to do vertical racks here?
Well, I think that request needs to be made because the request that you're making of us to increase your exterior warehousing storage from eleven thousand square feet to twenty-nine is also financial. I mean, that's, that's to a financial benefit. And I understand what you're saying is that you need that supply. You don't want to run out of supply. You can't sell out of an empty wagon. But for some financial cost, you could overcome your limited inventory storage area and satisfy your supply and your, you know, satisfying the demand of your customers. And it's a whole lot cheaper as far as the financial cost. It's a lot cheaper than building more building.
Absolutely. So I would like to request the opportunity to come back and present with what I can do on the next one.
That would be great. Motion to accept his request for deferral.
All right, so we have a motion for deferral from the app, from the applicant, seconded by Albert. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, deferred.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Okay, item number sixteen, Ashley's Place Parking Lot Addition, Final Master Development Plan. Charlie.
Good evening, Commissioners. Charlie Pura, Staff Planner. The owner and applicant requests approval of a preliminary, off on here, a Final Master Development Plan for Ashley's Place Parking Lot Addition located south. Okay. My agenda, it seems to be off. I'll read from here. Located south of.
West Smith Street?
The wording is off on there, but it's, uh, south of West Smith Street.
Oh, yeah.
And it's zoned as R six, high density, or not zoned as R six. Zoned as, um, that's MRO, multiple residential and office. Uh, the applicant is proposing an additional, um, twelve parking spaces to go along the western side of that, um, structure just to accommodate for some extra parking. Uh, staff did have the comment in there to add the landscaping around the perimeter as required by the zoning ordinance. Uh, the planning department recommends approval of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one zero three with four conditions.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, uh, you have a member from the applicant present?
I'm representing the applicant, Brian Reichschneider, um, City of Gallatin Engineering Department. This is City of Gallatin Property.
Okay.
But the tenant is, uh, Ashley's Place, which is a child advocacy group. Uh, we're in agreement with all conditions and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Okay. I don't know, I mean, this, we're just expanding the parking lot, correct?
That's correct.
Is it, it's all in the, well, is it flood plain or floodway or both?
Little bit of each.
Okay.
Some of it's actually shaded X as well, so.
Um, yeah, over to the right. Um. Can someone refresh my memory on who our flood plain development manager is? Brian, that's what I thought. Uh, I'm, are you okay with this?
They'll have to get a flood plain development permit in order to.
Proceed. Okay.
Possible. Um, so, yes, and they've already submitted an application for that.
Okay, cool. I mean, as long as they're following proper procedures, I'm out. This seems very straightforward.
What do you mean? I mean, do they have to create additional capacity in flood plain for what they're taking away from it?
They have to just prove that, um, any, uh, development within the flood plain will not cause an increase to the levels of the base flood elevation, um, more than one foot. So I, I don't believe that this will do that, but we just need to see that data.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, I, this seems pretty straightforward.
It is. I mean, it's, it is, it's a.
And there's not even any conditions, right?
Four conditions.
Cool.
Where did I miss that?
They're trying to continue to just improve their facility and their access for the work that they do. And this is a city unpop, you guys did the plan, right?
Yeah, uh, Steve Bridges did the surveying and then they had some trouble finding an engineer to help them out. So we volunteered to offer our services to help, uh, move that plan forward to you all.
I bet that wasn't cheap.
I'm making a motion to approve his staff's four conditions.
I'll, go ahead.
I'll second.
Okay. So a motion and a second. Um, any other discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, passes. Thank you. Seventeen.
The owner and applicant requests approval of a Final Master Development Plan for Monday Anthony Street Development to construct three single-family detached residences on a zero point two one acre lot zoned as R six, high density residential, located south of Demoss Street and west of Anthony Street. Start with the, uh, architecture for, um, this project. Uh, it does have a brick water table that is on the front of the, um, renderings shown. Uh, there is a note that this will be added to the other remaining facades. Staff is comfortable with accepting that as being part of the, um, meeting the architecture requirement. Uh, there were some concerns about the, um, stormwater, um, infrastructure on the property and being able to fit the, um, sidewalk along Demoss Street. I'll let engineering speak a little bit on that. And the planning department recommends approval of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one one seven with thirteen conditions.
Okay. Uh, is there a representative from the applicant present?
Go to Beasley, Greenland Design. Uh, we're in agreement with all staff conditions. Um, happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
And these, uh, there's been several others along this street do the same thing, correct? Okay. Was there any, I mean, I was in that work session. Was there any crazy comments, questions during that time?
Just that questions around the grass strip and the five feet of sidewalk.
We've got that worked in and, uh, we still think we can accomplish what engineering is asking for in these conditions.
I make a motion to approve with the thirteen conditions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we move on to item number eighteen, other business.
Don't really have much to report on other business other than, uh, we did get our final draft back from our consultants with TPUDC for the zoning ordinance. Uh, Jillian and I will be doing a really quick run-through to check and make sure that everything looks good before we put it out for the planning commission to start reviewing that. Uh, we do expect to deliver that to you next month sometime. But just stay tuned and, um, we'll probably, once we deliver it, give you a, a little bit of time and then start maybe the fall, you know, in December to start to talk about it, so.
Will we get a digital copy?
Uh, that, we might be able to do that. It's a very, very big file, so, um, we can work with you on whatever needs you have, but, um, however, I guess if you guys want to give us some, you know, indication of what you'd prefer, that might be helpful too. So, um, you know, send me an email and just let me know if you have a preference one way or the other.
Okay.
That's it for other business.
Any announcements? I entertain a motion for adjournment. All right. All's in favor of adjournment?